Thank you. Good morning and welcome everyone. Today is the 30th of October of 2025 and this is the ordinary council meeting for Ipswich City Council. And the meeting is starting at nine AM. I'll call for attendance and we have all councillors in attendance except for the Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic. And I'll go on to that. She already has an approved leave of absence, but we'll get to that when we get to item four. We now move on to item two, the acknowledgement of country. If Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share, we pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We now move on to the opening prayer and I'm very fortunate we are able to have Reverend Mapoli Massamola from the St Paul's Parish in Ipswich. May I ask you to come forward? Both councillor Antonelli and I were recently at your confirmation into the St Paul's Parish. And I think, if you'd like to come, I think councillor Madden, you'd like to make a bit of a statement. Is that correct?
I wasn't planning that. I'm very pleased, very pleased that the reverend has agreed to say the prayer today. I recently met him during one of the council's festivals where St Paul's featured with the quilt display. And I think he will say an excellent prayer today. And thanks again for coming in, Reverend.
Thanks for the invitation, Mayor and councillor. And thank you for being present at my commissionerial confirmation. It just felt good. I felt welcomed and my family felt welcomed. Back then we're still lodging at Aspire. They were planning to move us more fully into their lodging and race view. That has happened since. So yeah, we're feeling very much at home and thank you for supporting our activities. I'm sure there'll be more coming. I'm told there's a big Christmas tree that will be not very far from our church. And I'll just let you in on it. We're planning to do something to complement that around that time. Just about prayer. I just came across a reading that I read a long time ago in the nineties from a theologian, German theologian, Dorothy Söller, who says, "To pray is to borrow God's eyes." And I think that that's a powerful thing, practical and powerful. And in a sense, I think that's what we will be doing as we're praying together. But also something that I would encourage all to do, that when we enter that space of prayer, we're trying to see God from God's perspective, our neighbour from God's perspective, ourselves from God's perspective, and therefore have something of a clearer view of where we might be called to move into. This is a piece of scripture from Festimothy, chapter two, verse one to three. First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all who are in high positions, so that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and dignity. This is right and is acceptable in the sight of God, our saviour. With those words, let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we seek your guidance and wisdom. We ask that you bless Mayor Theresa Harding and all the councillors present. May their hearts be filled with integrity, their minds with clarity and their eyes with your vision as they make decisions that affect the city. We pray for unity and good cheer among the council members, that they may work together harmoniously for the betterment of Ipswich. Grant them the strength to listen to the needs of the residents and the courage to take the necessary actions for a prosperous future. We pray for those affected by recent storms and thank you for those who stepped in to come to their aid, especially municipal agencies and their partners. May this meeting and the plans discussed here today foster growth, innovation and inclusivity for all citizens. Help us to build a city that reflects kindness, compassion and respect for one another. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much Reverend Mapoli. And thank you councillor Madden for making the introductions. We now move on to four, which is apologies and leave of absence. The Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic is on approved delegation in Dubai with the council of mayors of South East Queensland representing me. And under council's meeting procedures policy 9.7.5, a leave of absence is automatically granted to a councillor where the council passes a formal resolution for a councillor to attend a conference or event. So we'll note her approved leave of absence. I don't have any others before. We move on to item five, which is the condolences. And we have a condolence motion from councillor Andrew Antonelli. Councillor Antonelli, I'll hand over to you now for that condolence motion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to note that the council conveyed condolences on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ipswich to the family of the late Estathios Stacey Kermos, who passed away on the 30th of September 2025. On Tuesday, the 30th of September 2025, Estathios Kermos, known to many of us as Stacey Kermos, passed away after a tragic accident whilst training at his Benoa karate dojo at the age of 74. To say that Stacey packed a lot into his life would be an understatement. He was full on and all the time. A husband, father, brother and friend to many, karate was just another of his loves and devotions. A sixth than black belt, Stacey continued to practise, train and commit himself to the art all of his life. It was a passion that he shared with many others and his feats in this space alone would fill a lifetime of any other person. But in many cases, Stacey lived the equivalent of many lifetimes. Those who ever met him would be won over by his knowledge, confidence, charm and charisma. Maybe it was his Greek heritage. Maybe it was his action-packed life. Maybe it was the perfect recipe of all those ingredients. Despite it all, it was his humility and humbleness. In short, for Stacey, he was more interested in talking to you. A decorated Queensland police officer, he received international recognition for his rescue of a drowning man in raging floodwaters during the 1974 floods. As a covert operative, working undercover for many days, weeks and months at a time when support networks for operatives was minimal at best, Stacey successfully infiltrated and brought down numerous underworld and organised crime figures involved in matters from drugs to drug to gun running. So successful, he became known as Queensland Serpico, a nod to crime busting New York police detective Frank Serpico. Such was his impact as a police officer that no less than retired Police Commissioner Bob Atkinson spoke at his funeral. After leaving the QPS, Stacey started in the security industry. And ultimately, it was this talent that brought him to Ipswich. At a time when social disorder and the perception of fear risked the reputation of central Ipswich, council made the decision to support two initiatives within the CBD. One was to establish a permanent police beat office in the Ipswich Mall. And the second was to engage Stacey Kermos to implement a full-time, live-monitored, closed-circuit TV security camera system within the beat office and covering the central trading area in and around the Ipswich Mall. The Ipswich Safe City network began with approximately 20 surveillance cameras and a dedicated team of monitoring staff. Among them was Larry White, a founding member who has been with the program since its inception and now serves as its manager. The operations initially took place in a room no larger than a small bedroom. The program now boasts some 360 cameras covering Ipswich Central, many other suburbs, parks and public spaces. It remains monitored full-time and focused on public safety. Ipswich is recognised across the globe as a leader in public safety CCTV networks. And that recognition is all because of the work, efforts and passion of Stacey Kermos. I had the pleasure and honour of working with Stacey on both sides of those cameras. Firstly, as a police officer and later as councillor. In the first instance, I was fortunate to have been tasked with the introduction, implementation and initial operation of the Ipswich Police Beat when it opened and therefore witnessed firsthand how the Safe City program could assist in public safety, but also in the identification, detection and apprehension of crime. Then as a councillor from 2000, I had the good fortune to work with Stacey through Safe City, but to also witness his efforts to expand and perfect the program. Stacey could handle the politics of council and police with aplomb. He could also back up all of his claims with the facts and figures, all derived from Safe City cameras. A reason why he was also so effective in obtaining grants to further grow the program. And grow the program he did into one of the world's leading public safety CCTV networks. Stacey hosted visiting luminaries, crime fighting and law enforcement representatives both nationally and internationally, showcasing the worth and effectiveness of the Safe City program. Representatives from Scotland Yard and the Home Office of the UK have been among the many law enforcement agencies from across the nation and the globe who have visited the Safe City Centre. Safe City has kept data since its inception and many thousands of street offences and crimes may have been detected in this time. But it has always been the offences that have been deterred and the interventions by security and police ensuring that no one was seriously hurt that always motivated Stacey in his role. Your safety, our safety was his priority. In 2009, Stacey moved on to serve other communities with similar programs, taking the success of Safe City with him wherever he went. Ipswich should retain a special place in its heart for Stacey Kermos. And I'd go as far as proposing that this council should consider honoring Stacey with some form of recognition within the Safe City program itself. However, I'll leave that for a future discussion. I take this opportunity to pass on my most sincere condolences to Stacey's family and thank them for allowing Stacey to share some of his life with us. It was impactful, inspiring and much appreciated. Vail, Stacey Kermos. Rest in peace, fellow brother in blue.
Thank you councillor, that was a very heartfelt, moving condolence. Thank you so much for sharing that. We'll now move on to item six, tributes, and there are none. We'll move now on to item seven, the presentation of petitions, and we have two petitions. First one is a petition for a pedestrian crossing on Jones Road, Bellbird Park. And that petition has been received from residents of Bellbird Park, calling for the urgent installation of a pedestrian crossing on Jones Road, Bellbird Park, directly across from the Red Bank Plains Scout Den. And the recommendation is that the petition be received and referred to the relevant council department for investigation and a report back to the appropriate committee meeting. I'm happy to move that. I'm just looking at the divisional council. The council tell you, you're happy to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that, ma'am.
Thank you. Normally we don't have discussions with petitions. If anyone's okay, will I go straight to the vote for that? Put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Next is 7.2, and that is a petition on the proposed event at 585 to 615 Rosewood Lady Road, Calvert. And this is a petition from residents of Rosewood and the surrounding areas opposing an event to be held on the 11th to the 17th of November 2025 at 585 to 615 Rosewood Lady Road, Calvert. And the recommendation is that petition be received and referred to the relevant council department for investigation and a report back to the appropriate committee meeting. I note that this particular petition is regarding something where a temporary entertainment event licence has already been has already been approved by council and council has done a media statement, I think contacted a number of residents about that. So I did contact councils yesterday to see how they like this petition managed. So I moved it in court with council's meeting procedures policy, that the petition is formally received and for us to advise, and for council to advise the petitioner, that no further action will be taken as the matter has already been determined. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor. We can have the CEO speak to it or we're happy to just go straight to the vote. I'm getting nods. CEO, do you mind just sort of succinctly outlining, I guess, the technical reasons for the approval and so on?
Could I just clarify? This is to receive a petition. It's not to look at the decision that's already been made.
No, correct.
I think, you know, as I said, the discussion on whether or not we should receive it is the only appropriate discussion we should have.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm happy to take that advice. Thank you councillor. Okay, so now I put up the discussion about whether we should receive this petition and advise the petition that no further action will be taken. I'll wrap it up now councillor.
I'll just be very brief. Obviously, people signed the petition in good faith at a time before a decision was made. I think we could just extend to them the courtesy of receiving the petition and, you know, advising them of, you know, that the matter's already been dealt with. It's just something that I think is the appropriate way to deal with. It's an unusual situation. I don't recall that we've had this situation before. But I think that's the easiest way, just that we act in good faith in just receiving it formally.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried.
Could I also just say, ma'am?
The matter's finished. It's been voted. Item eight, presentations and deputations. And we have two presentations and one deputation. The first presentation is the 2025 Property Council Australia Innovation Excellence Awards. The Woods Bagger Award for the Best Public Building or Social Infrastructure Award for Tumma Place, Nickel Strip Precinct. And I'll just show people the award here. Ipswich's Nickel Strip Precinct has transformed a dilapidated and abandoned mall into a thriving civic and social heart of our city. Tumma Place in the Nickel Strip Precinct has won the Woods Bagger Award for Best Public Building or Social Infrastructure at the Property Council of Australia. It's a national award for innovation and excellence. This prestigious award recognises excellence in the development of and the efficient use of capital in a high-quality new refurbished social infrastructure asset. It is truly an honour to win this category in a field of 15 amazing public spaces across the country in this year's innovation awards. Tumma Place has been an incredible space, hosting markets, events and Ipswich festivals, resulting in a 190% visitation increase compared to this time last year. Precinct visitation has grown by about 30% annually since reopening, with this year's forecast on track to reach almost 2 million visitors and it's growing. It was a pleasure to accept this national award, recognise the innovation of the redevelopment that has led it to a transformation of our CBD for the benefit of our community. The second award is also for the Nickel Strip Precinct. Vote the award. Certificate. This is the Urban Developer Awards Development of the Year, Urban Regeneration, awarded to Ipswich City Council for the Nickel Strip Precinct. The Urban Developer Awards for Industry Excellence celebrate the best of urban development from across Australia and New Zealand. Ipswich City Council was awarded Development of the Year, Urban Regeneration for the Nickel Strip Precinct. The Nickel Strip Precinct has reshaped Ipswich's CBD into a civic and cultural destination. The project includes 21,000 square metres of office space, 12,500 square metres for council, plus a children's library, Tumma Place, retail cinemas and a public garden. Judges praised our adaptive reuse of a former Woolworths and car park and sustainable design features like solar panels, recycled materials and water-sensitive landscaping. The precinct is delivering long-term social and economic uplift for the Ipswich community and is projected to generate $108.49 million in economic uplift from 2024, with a total economic contribution of $1.25 billion by 2032. I would like to present these awards to you, CEO, and congratulate you and your team on the continued success of the precinct. The next we have a deputation. I'll call on Mr Anthony Camu on behalf of Kenyans in Queensland Incorporated, speaking on the importance of extending the newly formed Ipswich Multicultural Advisory Committee. So Mr Camu, if I could ask you to come up. And I also want to note the presence in our public gallery of Mr Benny Bowle, OAM, who is the Chair of the Athai Foundation and the former Chair for many years of the Queensland African Communities Council as well. So thank you very much. And Mr Camu, I think you've been given the rules. It's up to 15 minutes. You don't need to speak for the whole time. And to keep speaking on matters of council.
Thank you so much. Mayor Theresa Harding, CEO Sonia Cooper, the rest of the councillors and members of the public and members of staff from Ipswich City Council, good morning. My name is Anthony Kamau. I'm the president of Kenyans in Queensland. And today marks seven years and 28 days since I landed here in Australia. I'll be making a deputation. Good morning councillors. Thank you for inviting me to speak today. My name is Anthony and I'm here as a proud member of our multicultural community. Today, I want to talk about the importance of making our multicultural advisory board a permanent part of our council's framework. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the positive impact of our multicultural community. Australia is a nation built on diversity and Ipswich is no exemption. Nearly half of all Australians who are born overseas or have a parent from another country. This rich blend of cultures is what makes our community very vibrant, unique and dynamic. Multicultural communities contribute to our economy. They bring unique perspectives and create a richer cultural landscape. And as one Nelson Mandela said, "For to be free is not merely to cast off one's chains, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others." Our multicultural community embodies this spirit, therefore fostering unity and understanding among us all. I'd like to talk about the challenge of belonging as people who are in a new country. However, many individuals in our community still feel a disconnect. They often find it difficult to engage with local government and don't always know how to voice their concerns. This is essential to recognise that this is not just a one-way street. We want to belong and participate fully in our community because Australia opened the doors. It made us that chance to come and become. It gave us an opportunity for us to come and grow from where we came from. But the aspect of belonging is always the missing puzzle in this equation. We need to move beyond simply having community members act as representatives based on their ethnicity. What we truly need as leaders, individuals who can authentically represent the diverse perspectives within our community, is that we need that genuineness in our leadership so that we can all feel as part of this multicultural umbrella. The solution is establishing a permanent multicultural advisory committee. And this is why. That's where a permanent multicultural advisory committee comes in. As you have heard, I'm sure the mayor every day deals with so many challenges across the divide from all the multicultural groups. And I would like to suggest to you that all these problems are collection. And therefore, being collection of challenges, being collection of problems, they only need a collection of approach. And that's why this committee will play a very significant and a vital role in bringing the solutions together. This committee would be more than just a formality. It would be a vital platform for dialogue and collaboration by bringing together true leaders from our multicultural communities, along with council officers, councillors, the mayor, the CEO, creating actionable insights that truly reflect the needs of those we serve. In times of uncertainty, like the recent troubling rise in racially charged incidents, I'm sure you have seen what has been happening in the media. We must stand together. A multicultural advisory committee can be a beacon of hope and resilience, ensuring that every community feels valued and heard. You have seen pamphlets, you have seen news, you have heard comments, you have seen the protest. And let me tell you, if this committee was established as a permanence, it would be a beacon of hope. And let me tell you, this would be a milestone. We may build parks, precincts and many other things. But if we're not looking after the welfare and the needs of people and giving them a sense of belonging, those buildings would just be a show. And therefore, I would like to invite you councillors to consider this. Engagement enriches us all. Engaging with our multicultural community enriches everyone involved. When diverse voices are included in decision-making, we create policies that genuinely address the unique challenges our communities face. As Maya Angelou wisely said, "Diversity makes for a rich tapestry." And we must understand that all the threads of a tapestry are equal in value, no matter their colour. In conclusion, in closing, I'd like to urge you to support this motion in making this multicultural advisory board a permanent fixture within Ipswich City Council. This is not just about inclusion. It's about ensuring that everyone in Ipswich feels a sense of belonging and has the opportunity to contribute to our shared future. And I believe together, as we make this permanent, it will be a step towards building a more inclusive, a more vibrant Ipswich for all of us. And statistics don't lie. Numbers don't lie. We have so many Kenyans here who live in South Ripley, Spring Mountain, Forest Lake, sorry, Forest Lake is in Brisbane, sorry. And, you know, Spring Mountains, Springfield and so many other communities. I may just mention, I've just mentioned one to represent all of them. But I can tell you, as we bring this multicultural board to a reality, this will be a great step towards a shared future. Because we are looking at 2032 Olympics. We are looking at building an Ipswich for the future. We are looking at welcoming generations that one day will say, there was a councillor Paul Tulley, there was a mayor Theresa Harding. there was a mayor Theresa Harding, who had my great-grandfather and established that multicultural communities so that I can be seen, I can be valued, I can be heard and I can feel my presence matters to this beautiful community. And so, dear councillors, dear mayor and dear CEO, I would like to make this personal and passionate invitation for you to consider this multicultural advisory board as a permanent fixture. And I can tell you, you will be part of history. The question is, as I conclude, which part of history do you want to be? As we see what is happening in the media, as Ipswich grows, as we clear more forests to build more homes, more sustainable homes, which part of the history do you want to be? A history that voted this motion out or a history that made a permanent decision because they had multicultural and the generations to come at heart? So please, I would like to invite you this morning, today, here at Ipswich City Council chambers, to make this a multicultural advisory board permanent for the future. God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr Camau, thank you very much for your impassioned deputation. Appreciate that, thank you. And also, in recognition, thank you, Mr Benny Bowle, OAM, for also being here in the public gallery. Thank you. We now move on to item nine, which is public participation, and that is nil. Item ten, matters of public interest, and that is nil. We now move on to item eleven, declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. I opened that up, I haven't been informed of any, but have any been raised? Please just feel free to raise them to the meeting if that happens. And we move on to item twelve, the confirmation of minutes, item 12.1. It's the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting. Are there any questions of the council officers on this? In that case, I will move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 25th of September 2025 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Antonelli. Any errors, omissions, amendments? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Unanimous and carried. I now move on to item thirteen, which is the mayoral minute, and there is none. Item fourteen, business outstanding, there is none. Item fifteen, we now move on to the reception and consideration of the committee reports. The first one is item 15.1, the report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee of the 14th of October. And I do note there on that particular meeting, there was a question on notice from councillor Doyle. I might just ask the council officers if a response has happened to that or is it still underway? CEO, there was a question for councillor Doyle on social housing policy.
Yeah, that's still underway, ma'am.
Still on the way, okay, thank you. I'll hand this report over to councillor Antonelli, who's the Chair of that committee, to see how he would like this report managed.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I'd like to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee, number 202509, of the 14th of October 2025, for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Martin. I'll hand over to you, councillor Tully, to speak to the matter.
Ah, I'm happy with the report as presented, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Martin is the second, do you wish to speak to it?
No, thanks, ma'am, happy with the report.
Thank you. I do know that we all sort of discussed it at the committee meeting as well, especially talking about the e-scooter pilot and then the capital delivery report. My apologies, I noticed there was two questions on notice for that. CEO, there's one on the social housing, but there's also, I think, one on initiatives regarding council, federal government and DVAC, and can we further streamline and expedite the delivery of those projects?
You may, that's underway as well, thank you.
Okay, I'm just checking with councillor Doyle on that. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'll move straight to the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Tully, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. I do wish to speak in relation to item two, the Springfield Central e-scooter Pilot Outcomes Report. Even though this was touched on at the committee, I think it's deserving of being raised here at the full council meeting. That trial at Springfield Central ran from July 2023 to October 2024. The recommendation is not only to receive and note the report, but that the findings of this report be used to inform any future proposal for a shared micro-mobility scheme for the city of Ipswich. The data which has been prepared in this very comprehensive report by the officers is quite illuminating over that period from July 23 to October 2024, over a number of months. The total trips taken were 34,188, number of vehicles on average used at a time was 103, the average trip duration was 11.6 minutes, average trip distance was 2.4 kilometres, and the average trips per day were 68.1. The councillor Johnnyc and myself, as the two divisional councillors, you know, had agreed to, had agreed originally that this be trialled in the area. And it did obviously had the support of Bean Mobility, who were successful in having that trial approved by the Ipswich City Council. The report indicates that there were very few reported incidents, that there might have only been one recorded minor incident in relation to this trial. There's no data in relation to another issue that both councillor Johnnyc and myself have received, and that is some of the vehicles, the scooters, are being left in inappropriate cases, blocking footpaths and particularly around pedestrian crossings, signalised crossings. And that's very difficult, of course, because formal complaints are rarely made in relation to those, except for people travelling or walking and witnessing that. I think overall, we'd probably say it was reasonably successful. Not as successful as, say, the trials in the Brisbane CBD and South Brisbane and the valley sort of area because they've got a very high population, a very high daytime population in those areas. But this report does enable us to look to the future of where trials might be planned. As I said at the committee meeting, one of the dilemmas is to have it in our trial and our CBD or even a permanent installation. But there's narrower footpaths, there's a lot of pedestrians, footpath dining in particular, which would raise a number of issues about safety. But when you look around the city, whether it's in Ripley, Bouvel, Rosewood, Red Bank Plains and other areas of the city, I think this will emerge again in the future. A lot of people are supportive of it, a lot of people, they used it. I think we'd say it was reasonably successful, but it does need to be properly considered at a time when we get further applications to have these trials in other parts of the city.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor, do you have anything in right of reply before we go to the vote?
I'll write a reply. Yeah, I just want to thank councillor Tully for his comments on that. Many people would be aware, and if not, I'm happy to inform them that the state is currently undertaking a review or an inquiry into the use of these types of mobility devices, among many other forms of personal mobility devices. They're looking into that at the moment because I don't believe personally that the law has kept up with the usage. So that is one area that they are looking at. I thank councillor Tully for his comments in relation to that. My particular interest in the trial is, and I guess it relates to two questions which councillor Tully might be able to help me with later, is that, one, did he take part in the trial himself and, two, is there photographic evidence?
Yes and yes.
Yes, the mayor and I were photographed down near the lagoon. I got a bit of a briefing about how the brakes work, but I didn't take into account all of the technical requirements. But I was saved by the mayor, I think she grabbed my scooter and stopped me just in time.
We had no stacks. Thank you. That, we go to a vote, thank you very much. Those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to 15.2, the report of the Finance and Governance Committee, the 14th of October 2025. I know there were no questions on notice there. I'll hand over to the committee chair, councillor Tully, how would you like this report managed?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll move that the Finance and Governance Committee Report, number 202509, be received and the doc, the recommendations contained therein be adopted.
Thank you, do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to the matter?
Yes, I have two items, ma'am. One is in relation to item two on page 55 of the report. That's the lease renewal of the Freehold Land at 116 Brisbane Street, Ipswich. That's at the corner of Brisbane Street and Darcy Doyle Place, known locally, of course, as the Indian Mayfield Restaurant. This is a recommendation for a renewal of the existing lease to June 2031. It's been open for 15 years, it's well-known to a lot of people, right in the heart of the city, and it's trading under that name. The lease expires on the 30th of June 2026. This gives some certainty to the continuity of that lease. That particular property is State Heritage listed, it was constructed in 1878 as the Bank of Australasia. It's in a very prime position, there is a lot of people moving, you know, along Brisbane Street, Limestone Street, coming through Darcy Doyle Place and coming down to the mall area. So the recommendation, which was agreed to unanimously at the committee, was to recommend the approval of that for a further five years. And I think we'd all say that people have been there, it's a good place, it's very central and it's quite appropriate that we extend that lease. Item three on page 56, ma'am, is in relation to information cybersecurity policy. In accordance with our policies, existing policies, this is being reviewed every four years. Most policies are in that timeframe. This is a very important policy to ensure the cybersecurity and safety we have. Councillors and the community would be very much aware of hacking into, certainly hacking into a lot of commercial databases, a lot of organisations around Australia and around the world. And it's changing very quickly with AI technology and with the sophistication of the data hacking that we experience from time to time. This policy that we're proposing that be adopted will ensure that as a target for cyber criminals that we have, a cyber security which ensures that as far as possible, based on the existing technology, that we make our data impregnable to people trying to hack into it. The policy reflects our continual approach to upgrading our systems to ensure as more information becomes available, as it does usually on a daily or weekly basis of the continuing hacking into computer systems, that our data is safe and that's important for our community to know. So I'd urge the councillors to support the updated information in the policy.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Antonelli is the second, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. If I may, just also in relation to item two, which is in relation to the Indian Mayfield. It's interesting to note that, as councillor Tully highlighted, it's been there some 13, 13 years, I think it was, wasn't it? 15 years. They were the first restaurant to go in there that has been the great success that it has and ongoing success. And of course, the owner of Indian Mayfield has a cricketing background, played first-class cricket in India. And as a result, that restaurant has hosted a number of famous Indian cricket players and part of the Indian cricket team when it has been here in the Brisbane area or playing in Brisbane. And I believe that the little master himself, Sashen Tendalka, and MS Dhoni have probably two of the biggest Indian cricket stars to have dined there. So it's very good to see our support for it ongoing and I look forward to many bowls of butter chicken in the future.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli. I have other discussion. I was going to point out item three, which is the information cybersecurity policy, which councillor Tully covered quite well. I think when it came to our committee, it was the day that was breaking news about Newser Council being targeted, so it was quite timely. So I too am pleased to see these measures to safeguard our data and bolster our own security resilience. And this policy dovetails nicely with our other information security policies. Any other comments? Councillor Tully, would you wish to have a right of reply or stretch to that?
Just briefly, I'd thank councillor Antonelli and I'm sure you'll invite me to the next butter chicken gourmet that you have there. And to me, that is true.
That'd be extra bowl for you, wouldn't it?
Councils and corporations, individuals are only good as the data and systems that we have to prevent these issues arising. The Nooser example is a fairly extreme example, but you can only stay on top of this, you know, based on the best available advice. And I believe that our policy will cover that. We can, no one in the world can guarantee, you know, against databases being hacked into. But at least we're moving there, understanding it and paying really close attention through our offices to make sure it doesn't happen in the case of our council.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand and it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 15.3, the report of the Community and Sport Committee on the, I've got here the 16th of September, I've got here. Should be the 14th of October, sorry, on my run sheet. 14th of October. Can I just check the? Just the run sheet. Okay, my apologies. Okay, my apologies. Item 15.3, the report of the Community and Sport Committee, the 14th of October 2025. And I just checked, I don't think, there was a question on notice for that paper, CEO. There was a question on notice from councillor Andrew Antonelli on a query on the outcome of the relocation of the University of the Third Age from the Wood End facility.
Thank you, Chair. Ma'am, that was responded to by officers to all councillors on the committee. Sorry, just doing a quick count, it might have been all councillors on the same day.
Okay. Thank you. I'll now hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he'd like this report managed. Thank you, councillor Madison.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll move the recommendations as per the committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to speak to the report.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I believe it was constructive. I think everyone, if you haven't read the report on the Community and Sport section, I think we should. We've hit some great targets in the last 12 months and I commend the team on their work. And other than that, I just recommend it to the council to adopt as per the committee recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Augustine is the second, do you wish to speak to the report? Thank you, and I think you were at the Rivers Improvement Trust that day, I think you were on council business that day, that committee. Thank you. If there's any other commentary?
It's not on the report, am I allowed to say anything about the awards last night, sports awards?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Councillor Madison, like a right of reply or stretch to the vote? Okay, put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 15.4, the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee. I'll just see if there was any, there was no questions on notice. I'll hand over to the Chair of that particular committee to see how she would like that report managed.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to move that the Economic and Cultural Development Committee held on the 14th of October be received and adopted as noted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll let you speak to the matter, councillor Augustine.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I just want to speak on a couple of items. We, first one was item two, which was the Springfield Carols. It's great to see that those carols are up and going again. We missed them last year, but they're very well-attended carols, been going on for a number of years now. So I think the community are really going to respond quite well to these carols. So I wish them luck in delivering them this year. Then we've got item three, we've got our art director going, she won a bursary from the Gordon Darling Foundation to attend Dubai for the International Council of Museum event, which is fully paid for, which is great. And I think this will only enhance her knowledge going over on this trip. And I must say, I'm extremely impressed in any circles that I moved in the arts side of things. The admiration and for Claire is just next level. So we're in very good hands and I'm really proud that she'll be going on this trip and I wish her well. And then there's item four, which is the Nicola Street Precinct. Happy to see that Vapianos and Hello Harrys have opened. Hopefully, we've all frequented those businesses, I know I have with Vapianos. I'll have to go and get a Harry's Burger soon as well. So it's good to see that the numbers in the precinct in September, estimated 326,000 visitations, which was up 9% from August. So that's a really good indication that our precinct is doing well and the confidence in the precinct as well is also growing. And hopefully, we can continue that with maybe some further announcements before. And hopefully we can continue that with maybe some further announcements before the end of the year. So yeah, just really excited about how the Nicholas Street Precinct is going as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Augustine. Councillor Delly is a seconded. Do you wish to speak to the report?
Thank you, Chair. Agree with councillor Augustine's comments, particularly in relation to item four. Really exciting and pleasing to see the Nicholas Street Precinct, the new tenancies open and how well-received they've been in the community. And it's great to see residents flocking in and supporting them. I do have a question, I guess, I think potentially for Mr Hepburn, but maybe Mr Ben Poll, it's around managing the numbers of visitors at an event, just from a risk perspective.
Is there any idea of relevant council officers? I think Mr Poll's coming up for the
General manager would be able to assist.
Good morning, Mayor. Councillor Ben Poll, General Manager, Community, Cultural and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr Poll. Couple of questions, and I'm sorry to spring this on you. This is as a result, I guess, of very successful Halloween markets on the weekend, which is hosted by the Handmade Expo Market Group. It was very, very successful and the crowd numbers were very, very significant. And I just want to frame or preamble my, my question with having chaired Ipswich Central last term and Nicholas Street Precinct. I'm absolutely delighted, really excited and proud to see the precinct grow and would never, it, it, it's been a long time coming. So it's just delightful to see that many people, which is what we've been wanting. But I now turn my mind to when some of these events, potentially the numbers swell outside of what we had anticipated. And I know we do a lot of planning, as we do with the companies that we get into, Activate, independently, planning around risk and numbers. If on the night, the numbers swell, just wondering how we manage that from a risk, a public safety point of view, in particular, there was a bit of a bottleneck outside the Ipswich Library. I'm wondering how council can respond to that in the moment, in need. So acknowledge that it's probably a question on notice, but I anticipate, particularly as we head into Christmas, we're going to see this type of patronage, particularly with Vapianos and Hello Harrys opening. It's drawing a lot of additional people into the precinct.
Thank you, councillor. It's a fair point. It is a constrained site. And so each event has a risk management plan associated, so that the team go through every event and do implement a risk management plan. And that considers the prospective numbers. If we start seeing these events getting to a point where the numbers are impacting on the experience, let alone safety, then we'll have to start putting in place mitigating actions. In the moment, so to your point about maybe there's an event like Halloween that was actually more popular than expected and planned for. We do, of course, have our security and they are council-managed security. And they are very responsive in the moment. They are able to, if necessary, interject and start managing crowds. But also if required, they can actually bring in additional staff and additional security members as well. So maybe offer that up in this instance, but also talk to the team. And if there's anything that they want to provide as a follow-up on notice, then we'll provide that back as well.
Thank you, Mr Poll. Yes, absolutely. And please pass on my congratulations to the, the team within council. They've been doing an outstanding job. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good position to be in.
Thank you, Mr Poll. Thank you.
That's probably the extent of my comment. Councillor Augustine has spoken to the main matters.
Thank you. I think councillor Tully was next to speak.
Yeah, just briefly, I might just mention about Halloween too. That's very popular in the city. Tomorrow night, I'm sure all the councillors will be at Goodna. Jack Symperham goes to as Australia is combining Halloween with the Goodna Cemetery. Two of the, I won't dwell on this, but two of the story tells about the Headless Angel and the man who's been buried three times. So it's a sell-out, it's a sell-out down there. Maybe next time. Just item two, I'd like to briefly touch on with, which councillor Augustine has mentioned about the Springfield Carols. That is a very good recommendation because it gives certainty to the eastern suburbs about the funding arrangements over three years. And I think that with the Christmas carols, we all are aware of the issues that they had last year. It will be a major event this year. I suspect that it'll be in the thousands of people who'll be there. It's been very popular in the past. And with the seventeen thousand five hundred being proposed and a total of fifty thousand dollars, I think it's a recognition by this council of the importance in the eastern suburbs in particular of having an event around Christmas time each year. And this guarantees that for the next three years. So I'd like to thank councillor Augustine and the committee for making this recommendation here to council today, which I fully support.
Thank you, councillor Tully. You mentioned, councillor Tully, the, the growth August of Halloween. I think the numbers in the Nicholas Precinct were around eight thousand people. I was speaking to the Ipswich Show Society, they had something on the exact same night, they had over five and a half thousand people up there. We had the Jacaranda Festival, which I know that you're, you're at. I don't know their numbers, but just seeing people see three really big events in one night in our city and having great patronage shows that people are very willing to come out for great local events. Thank you. Any other comments? I'll hand over to councillor Augustine for a write of reply.
I just want to thank councillor Doyle and councillor Tully for their importance, same with you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point five, the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the fourteenth of October twenty twenty five. I'll just check if there's a, if there's no questions on notice, I'll hand over to you, councillor Madden, as the Chair of that committee on how you would like this report managed.
Chair, as, as Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Committee, I'd move that the report, the Environment Sustainability Committee number, report number two oh two five oh nine of fourteen October two thousand and twenty five be received and the recommendations be adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Delly. Councillor Madden, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, yes, Chair. I'd just like to speak to item two on the, in the report, headed Ipswich Priority Species Update Report. Chair, through you, this report is an update on the progress of the Ipsus City Council's priority species conservation programmes for koala, brush-tailed rock wallabies, platypuses and flying foxes. These species face ongoing local and national threats and decline, the impacts of which council attempts to mitigate through conservation management actions. The report provides a summary of the actions taken over the past year under each species' respective conservation management plan, upcoming works and projects, as well as fauna and survey results. And finally, Mayor, I'd just like to thank the council officers that prepared the report, as well as the council officers that work so hard to preserve our endangered species in Ipswich.
Thank you very much. Councillor Delly, do you wish to speak to the report? Open up any of the commentary? No, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now have item fifteen point six, the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the eighth of October twenty twenty five. Councillor Delly, as you're one of the two council representatives on that, do you wish to move that report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In the absence of the other councillor on that committee, that being the Deputy Mayor, I shall move that the Audit and Risk Management Committee number two thousand and twenty five oh four, the eighth of October two thousand and twenty five, for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. Any discussion?
No, Mayor, although I do note that item two does fall into one of the items a little further in our agenda today, which is that the Audit and Risk Committee did look over the financial statements, which will be present within the annual report that we will be deciding later.
Thank you, councillor Delly. Councillor Madden, do you wish to speak to the? Thank you. In that case, I'll put the matter to, oh yes, councillor Tully, yes.
On the other attendance, I noticed it's got our chief financial officer. I think her surname's been spelled incorrectly. It should be B I N O Y A. If that could be corrected.
Yes, you're correct.
Good pick-up. Yes, we'll correct that.
We'll correct that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair.
Anything else? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll now move on to item sixteen point one, which is the officers' report, and the first one is, which is the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for September twenty twenty five. And I'll move that the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for the month of September twenty twenty five be received in contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. In moving this, I'd sort of speak to the success of our recent community, recent community programmes, and it's been highlighted, which show these programmes have been embraced by the community. During the September school holidays, our council delivered a vibrant array of free and low-cost activities designed to engage families, spark creativity and promote lifestyle, health, active lifestyles. From cricket and yoga to fishing and soccer, our active and healthy activities gave children and parents alike the chance to get moving and connect. Our libraries became hubs of discovery, hosting science and history-themed workshops that inspired young minds. And the Ipswich Art Gallery offered hands-on artistic experiences, while the Nicholas Street Precinct came alive with the return of dinosaur discovery, transforming our CBD into an immersive prehistoric playground featuring animatronic dinosaurs, live shows, sandpit digs and photo activations. More than eighty-one thousand six hundred and sixty visitors came to see the dinosaurs, which is a thirty percent increase on last year. This spring, and I acknowledge the work of the Chair of the Sustainable and Environment Committee, that we've championed sustainable living through a series of workshops and educational events, focusing on composting, native gardening and waste reduction. And more than three thousand eight hundred and forty people attended the Ipswich Sustainable Living Festival, which is almost double the attendance of last year. So we know that people are really, really keen to get that information on how they can make better environmentally conscious choices. So I just want to thank everyone who participated and volunteered in so many of these events. Councillor Delly is a seconded. Do you wish to speak to?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just would like to highlight the capital delivery programme for twenty five, twenty six, within the report, the month of September. Continued strong delivery performance, which is always fantastic to see, noting that the results were primarily due to the early completion of the road resurfacing works on Blackall Street in East Ipswich. So residents and ratepayers were delighted to see those works undertaken and completed, an important project. But great to see that the dry weather has aided in a good run for council with regard to our capital delivery. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open for other comments. No other comments? I'll put it straight to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. It's now one minute to ten, so I propose that we break till ten twenty. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. Everyone in the room is, everyone, it's unanimous and carried. See you back at ten twenty. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. It's ten-twenty-two after an adjournment. We're up to item sixteen point two, the adoption of the annual report. Are there any questions on the annual report? No, in that case, I will move that council adopt the Ipswich City Council Annual Report of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five in accordance with section one oh four of the Local Government Act two thousand nine and section one eight two of the local government regulations. And I think councillor Tully wished to second that.
Yes, ma'am.
As it came through, I think your, because of your committee. Thank you very much. Look, in speaking to this, it's a very important document. As councillor Tully talked about earlier, that the financial statements have been through the Order of Risk Management Committee. But from waste collection to libraries to community centres, our council continues to deliver essential services that touch every corner of our city. This annual report is a transparency measure that informs our community on our financial position and our roadmap for the delivery of key services. Ipswich City Council delivered a fifteen point one-eight million dollar surplus in twenty-four twenty-five, reversing last year's deficit and reinforcing financial stability despite inflationary pressures. Responsible management ensures continued investment in key services and community projects. We manage over four point nine billion dollars in infrastructure assets, ensuring our roads, drains and public spaces serve residents. Ipswich continues to grow rapidly, welcoming over nine thousand new residents and surpassing fifteen billion dollar mark in the gross original product, with more than ninety-five thousand jobs recorded in twenty twenty-four. To support this growth, the Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty-five and the Local Government Infrastructure Plan were adopted after years of dedicated work and community consultation. And that community consultation was also awarded by the Planning Institute of Australia as well. This new planning scheme has paved the way for one hundred thousand new homes and major investments in transport, parks and community facilities. Our commitment to the environment saw the rollout of over fifty thousand green-litred garden organic spins. This initiative will divert tens of thousands of tonnes of green waste from landfill each year, protecting our environment and reducing costs. Infrastructure delivery reached new heights with major upgrades to Red Bank Plains Road and Springfield Parkway, improving safety and traffic flow for thousands of residents. As I proudly co-host City for the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games, we continue to nurture grassroots sport and world-class athletes through upgraded facilities and community programmes. We've invested in libraries, community centres and festivals like Spark, Ipswich and Galvanised, celebrating the diversity and creativity that make our city unique. Council remains committed to enriching community life through the arts, with three thousand five hundred and one performing arts events at council venues, five unique festivals attended by more than a hundred thousand people and pools attended by more than seven hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred people, and a revitalised city centre and a precinct, bringing almost two million people to our CBD, ensuring Ipswich remains a vibrant, connected place to live and thrive. Councillor Tully, as a second, do you wish to speak to the annual report?
Just briefly, ma'am. It's a very comprehensive report and I endorse everything that you said. Every year, every council in Queensland presents these reports. I don't know, CEO, do they still have a competition or an award for the best prepared annual report?
Through you, Mayor, as Chair, I believe that they do, yes. You're suggesting that we enter?
Yeah, I think we, I think, I think we should.
Okay.
It's a, I don't think there's a big prize, but except the prestige of having a comprehensive, well-presented and the layout of the reports. I'm not sort of talking just about the data and the information that needs to be provided or should be provided, but they can be very comprehensive. So if I could ask the CEO if that could be looked at to nominate our, our report? Because there'll be seventy-seven of them in Queensland. And I think if ours is likely to qualify as, for some award, we should do it.
I would support that. I think it's like we had with the, the awards for Nickel Strip Precinct, it boosts community pride and it's always a good benchmarking exercise.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. Will do.
Thank you. I'll open up for other commentary on the annual report. If there is none, I'll put the matter to the vote. If there is none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item sixteen point three, the Ipswich to Springfield Central Public Transport Corridor project. It's a project progression to detailed business case. And there are two recommendations being put forward, that council note and consider the recommendation that has been made on the scope of the detailed business case for the Ipswich to Springfield Central Public Transport Corridor. And be that council agree to the recommended scope put forward by TMR of the Ipswich to Springfield Central Public Transport Corridor project to progress to a detailed business case. I would imagine that we wouldn't discuss this at this stage. TMR have given us this information as a confidential information. So I would like to move and second it, then probably go into closed session and then we can have a discussion on that, if that's okay with, with everyone here. So I'll move this. Do I have a second for this, councillor Martin? Thank you. In that case, I move in, I move that in accordance with section two five three J, sorry, two, two five four J three. Just looking which one. G. Negotiations are going to a commercial mode involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. That we move into a closed session to discuss item sixteen point three. Do I have a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Augustine. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. We are now in closed session. Thank you. We're still recording.
Thank you. It's eleven oh seven and thank you, we've just had a closed session to discuss item sixteen point three. The Ipswich to Springfield Central Public Transport Corridor project and the project progression to the detailed business case. There was a great deal of discussion, there's a lot of passion and care in this, in this room to, you know, to get a result for our, our community. I move both recommendations A and B. Councillor Martin seconded that, so I will now go to the vote on this matter. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in this room. Thank you. We now move on to item seventeen, notice of motion. We've actually got three today. The first one is from councillor Pi Augustine, a notice of motion on the Multicultural Advisory Committee. So I'll hand over to you councillor Augustine to, to move your, to move it. I'll get a second one and then I'll have you speak to it then. So you, you, you moved that one?
Yes, thanks ma'am, I'd like to move that.
And do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Thank you councillor Augustine, do you wish to speak to it?
Oh, thank you ma'am. Firstly, I just wanna thank the mayor and councillors for the opportunity to chair the Multicultural Advisory Committee for the last five months. In this time, I've established the terms of reference for the advisory committee and held four advisory meetings and attended dozen multicultural events, meetings to socialise the concept with the community groups and hear directly from our multicultural leaders. I've actually counted it and I've attended in this time no less than sixty, sixty meetings and events to do with multiculturalism. I bring this motion forward today in response to the overwhelming positive support from our multicultural communities to see this advisory committee permanently extended. With more than twenty per cent of our residents born overseas, that's a significant sector of our population that deserves the opportunity to engage with council on the decisions and actions that impact their lives. As we continue to grow as the fastest growing area in Queensland, forums like this foster inclusivity, diversity and cohesion in our decision making and most importantly, in our city. Unfortunately, across our nation, we're seeing the steep rise of anti-immigration sentiments. Right here in Ipswich, we've seen wide Australian flyers dropped in letterboxes across our suburbs. It is more important than ever that this advisory committee has a permanent place in council's meeting schedule as assigned to our multicultural communities, that we value their significant contribution to our city and the work we do as council. I believe this is, this will be a very positive addition to our existing advisory committees and therefore I'm asking today for the support to continue this advisory committee as a permanent basis. Thank you.
The motion?
I'll reserve my right if I may, thank you.
I'll now open up for other councillors to speak. Councillor?
Thank you ma'am. Having worked with councillor Augustine on the multicultural advisory committing, hearing about her passion and her connection to our multicultural community, I'm really proud of the work that she's undertaken as well as the advocacy. She's a fierce advocate and I'll be supporting her motion today to continue the advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments councillor Tully?
Just quite briefly, I'm supportive of this motion. It's an opportunity of moving forward and the presentation we had earlier this morning for a representative of an African community, I think that sort of said a lot for how as a council, we should lead the way in handling these very sensitive issues in, in, in a lot of ways, but very practical issues. We've got a large multicultural base of people in our city which we're very proud of, so I'll certainly be supporting this.
Thank you councillor Tully. I think that we've already seen the committee embrace the multicultural advisory committee's efforts to deepen our engagement and council's engagement with the Ipswich's richly diverse population. We did set a deadline of six months to, to see if this would work and I think it's been really well received by our multicultural communities. It's, I think, a way of council bridging connections with so many different cultures in our community and in a rapidly growing seed like Ipswich, these probably shouldn't be one-off conversations, but seeds of long-term collaborations. And as Ipswich continues to grow, so does its diversity. So I think to truly serve our residents, we must listen to all voices and this committee is, they've got one way for us to ensure that multicultural communities are not just acknowledged but actively involved in shaping the council's decisions and the impacts that means. So I'll be voting to support for this notice of motion. Thank you. I'll open up for anyone else. Councillor, you used to exercise your...
Yeah, just very briefly, ma'am, I just wanna give my full support to the motion and to the committee chair.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else councillor Augustine, I'll let you go write a reply and then we'll vote.
Thank you. Thank you for those that spoke for the motion and I'm very appreciative of the, yeah, of the support. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll vote on the matter. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item seventeen point two, which is a notice of motion from councillor Jacob Madison on the sponsorship signage at council-owned sporting facilities. So obviously all the mover councillor Madison, do I have a second councillor Martin? I'll hand over to you councillor Madison to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Chair. I think the motion's fairly self-explanatory, just calling for a report on council to put together how we do regulate signage at sporting facilities and what opportunities exist for us to actually deregulate and allow clubs to display sponsorship signage. There are some instances where it occurs at the moment that may or may not fit within permits and such, but I think it's a way forward for us to, you know, introduce to people this is the way that you can do it, this is, you know, these are the sort of methods that you can do and from there allow people to, to get some revenue. There's an element of it where quite often local sporting groups are supported by local small businesses. So I think in some respects too, it's appropriate for that sort of recognition to be possible from a signage perspective. Some of the quirks just involve as to whether or not you're on a lease or a permit or other arrangements that council may have. So yeah, just really allowing the officers to put together in the report what's possible to get some extra revenue. This is something that a number of sporting clubs in Ipswich would like to see as possible and to be more supported by council in doing. Some people have told me that they're not able to, so, and they'd like to be able to. So yeah, I think it's, as I said originally, quite self-explanatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
As councillor Madden said, I concur, it is quite self-explanatory and... Madison. Did I confuse you two again? Sorry. It's hard to talk you two apart. Yeah, just concur with councillor Madison that it is self-explanatory and have been asked by a number of sporting organisations what the parameters are. So to bring some clarity would be really good. Love to support our local clubs and as councillor Madison said, Madison, give our sponsors some worthy recognition. So thank you.
Councillor Augustine, I know this is something you've been working on as well?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Talking to a number of clubs and knowing that they can't use the signage on their fences and having the, the knowledge of running a football club and understanding what signage does for a sponsorship, sponsorship. It's the second highest revenue raiser to your club, notwithstanding if you were a pokies sort of venue. But I'm just talking about grassroots. It's the second highest revenue into your club behind registration fees. So getting the sponsorship dollars into your club is extremely important. But then when we're hampering our sporting clubs without the signage for our sponsors is, is a detriment to, to that sustainability of the clubs. Say ten years ago, average sponsorship, a, a business could give about twenty thousand dollars. It's dwindled down. Now the sponsorship that's been offered is basically an in-kind partnership. You refer and you get payment, like a real estate. You refer and then we'll, if you sell, we'll give you a payment comparable to the, the referral. But if you haven't got that visibility of your, your business, then it's really hard to generate those funds coming into your club. So I'm very supportive to be able to see how we can get our clubs to be able to use the fences and the areas around their clubs for, for signage. So I really welcome this motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yeah, yeah, I was making sure there's no other discussion. Do you'd like a right of reply before we go to the vote?
Yeah, I should just add, this isn't about people working up billboards that traffic can see going past it that might require a DA or anything of that sort. It's really about signage that's, you know, within the parameters of the sporting fields and quite tied to the activities of, of that club. It's nothing like really turning council parks into big billboards everywhere. That's not what I'm proposing. I certainly wouldn't support that. I don't anticipate the officers recommending that either, but it's really about just containing that activity, giving people a way to do it within the rules and allowing that sort of relationship to prosper with their sponsors.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now go to seventeen point three, a notice of motion from councillor Tully on funding for installation of traffic lights Augustine Heights and Brookwater. So I'll hand over to you councillor Tully.
Thank you ma'am. I will read the motion.
Sorry, I should find a second. You've got the first and councillor Augustine's seconding, so I'll now have you read it.
I'm moving that Ipswich City Council urgently review the intersection and roundabout at the corner of Augusta Parkway, Tournament Drive and Mount Julia Ratt Drive at Brookwater Augustine Heights with a view to expediting the installation of traffic lights to be funded through the Commonwealth Government Black Spot Programme and/or other available funding sources. I'll speak to that now that there is a second of mayor. This is a matter that councillor Johnic, my co-colleague in Division Two, have raised on various occasions, but the amount of traffic on Augusta Parkway is increasing significantly. The last council traffic count programme from last year shows that Augusta Parkway has, is the second busiest council road in, in Ipswich with thirty thousand and thirty-seven vehicles per day. That's only eclipsed by Synathambi Boulevard, which is virtually an extension of Augusta Parkway at Springfield Central with thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twelve. Their council roads, that excludes main roads of course. What, what's arisen is, is the safety issue at this roundabout and the need for traffic lights mainly in relation to the volumes of traffic, but more significantly in relation to the safety of pedestrians. Pedestrians who are using that intersection, and a lot of them are school students, young people come on school buses and are dropped off nearby. They have to cross four lanes of traffic. The only safety they've got in the middle of the road there, there is a, I'll call it a refuge, but then they've got to, having crossed across two, two lanes and go across another two as well. The, the, the pedestrians in, in doing that manoeuvre, you know, face a really real safety issue. So all I'm asking is the council start looking very seriously at how this can be funded, particularly with the Black Spot Programme. I believe that applications will be called again next year. I'm very supportive of this. And I know there are projects around the city. It's always, it's always money. Local government is always money. Whatever people want, whatever councillors want, whatever we try to do, there's not many decisions which don't have a dollar sign in front of them. So I'd ask for the support of, just to kick this off in a very serious way. I also mentioned the safety issue with vehicles coming in on Mount Julia Ratt Drive and Tournament Drive, which is the road leading down to the Brookwater Golf Club, that, that is another safety issue, particularly during peak hours. And the peak hours in this city, like the recent publicity in Brisbane, start very early for several hours, three to four hours and in the afternoon, a similar amount of time. So I'd ask for the support of councillors in relation to this motion.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Augustine, do you wish to speak to the matter?
Oh, thanks ma'am. I one hundred per cent support councillor Tully on this motion. I've, I frequent those shops quite a lot. And I was just thinking the other day how dangerous it was to come out of Tournament Drive and turn onto Augusta Parkway. You truly have to have your wits about you when you're merging into that, into that, I don't know if there is actually a, a peak hour. I think it's peak hour constantly through that section. And yeah, it's, I think it's becoming very extremely dangerous. So I very much support councillor Tully's motion.
Thank you. I put further discussion? Would you like a right of reply? There was no, no one against it councillor Tully before we vote?
Yeah, I think councillor Augustine, it's more than your wits against you. You need to be careful in the language you use sometimes when you're waiting there to enter Augusta Parkway. So with that final comment, I'd ask for the support of councillors, please.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I didn't have any questions on notice unless there's anything people would like to raise now? No? In that case, I'll close the meeting at eleven twenty-three. Thank you.